I need to.
And I don't see Betsy. It's Gil.
I don't see Betsy.
No, I don't.
Let's just wait a minute.
Thanks. There you are.
Hey, Betsy. Welcome. So I think we can get going. So I'd like to welcome everyone to the Hybrid Planning Board meeting of December 12th. And right now, I'd like to take a call to order. Ms. Creighton?
Here.
Ms. Delicio and Ms. Foley both sent me an email that they are sick. Scrolling? Is Tenny?
Yeah.
And I'm here. So we have a four member and that constitutes quorum. I'd like three members and guests to be recognized by the chair if they wish to speak, and this meeting is being recorded. The first item up is acknowledge receipt of correspondence and then receive a letter from Ray Niaboni on 11:30. At this time, I'd like to take any public comments to the board with a limited amount of time. Would anyone from the public like to speak? Okay. So moving things around, we have at seven o'clock, we have called for two, three public hearings. At seven o'clock, we'll talk about those, but we don't have enough members to vote on any of the special permits tonight. So I'm taking some items out of order to, before the seven o'clock hour, and the first item I'd like to take is the Board of Health proposed regulation comments that were distilled. And Betsy, you did not get a chance to do that.
I did not. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I did not get a chance to distill those because I was working on the two decisions for the marinas. So I will get to that for the next meeting.
Okay, thanks. So the next item I would take out of order is the 3A action plan form review. Betsy, any progress on that?
I had a meeting with Greg and also a short discussion with Sarah Malish about it. And I am working on that and anticipate that it will be done probably within the next two weeks. The board is not meeting until, I think, a month from now. So you can review it for your next meeting. It has to be in by the end of January.
Thank you. Any comments from the board on that? So with the, with the leaving of Gary Gilbert, three liaison positions have opened up. And I'd like to just fill them and just until the new person gets elected to the planning board. And those three positions are one liaison with the building inspector and I've asked Sarah Creighton to take that on. Any issues with that?
No, that's fine.
On, we need a liaison to the ZBA. And since Chris has been working with Sarah on recodification, I've asked Chris to take that on. Thank you. And then an opening for the library board of trustees liaison position. Anyone interested in that?
I could take it. This is just an interim thing, right?
We do, I'm sorry. Okay, Laura, thank you. Um. So the next item I have, I've delayed the traffic study report. He should be giving us a presentation at 7:30.
He will be, he will, I just talked with him. He'll be on, he'll be ready between seven and 7:15.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ron, this is Christine. I'm here.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, and I have had my hand raised for a bit, and I just did want to make a comment. I mean, just going through some of the 3A background information, there is a footnote on our, the towns. There's been some kind of a change to our numbers of units of data. I was wondering if the town has officially received a letter from the state and why there's a footnote on the website. It's dated 10/21.
Betsy, can you answer that?
I can't answer that.
Is Greg on?
I'll find out the answer, but I can't answer that right now.
Great, thanks. And so then the other thing I was just, you know, browsing other communities. And I'm concerned that the planning board is not taking the lead on this. I understand what the state requires, the CEO of the community. But every other community, it's the planning board, the planning department taking this and taking charge and getting input from other communities. So I am concerned, I mean, obviously, we need input from everyone, but Betsy's an interim person, Sarah Melish. I mean, we are elected officials. We are the people in charge of zoning. So, you know, taking charge and filing this form is one thing. But we, as the planning board, should be doing this work. We should not be farming this out. Obviously, Betsy needs to help us, but we should be driving this bus. So I just need to put that on record that we need to take this back and take control of this. This is zoning. This is our lane, and we're in charge of it. So I don't know why, I mean, Sarah Melish isn't part of, part of this at this point. I mean, obviously, the ZBA and ThinkCom all needs to be put input. But we, as a board, need to be driving this conversation.
I think the select board was looking into forming a task force on this. I don't know if that's happened yet. But I think there was some discussion on getting other boards involved.
Ron, the bottom line is this revolves around zoning. We should be doing what we need to do to figure out what zoning makes sense for us. We are the zoning board. This is our charge.
Laura?
We have a professional planner. We're not farming this out. This is the professional planning staff giving us assistance in preparing the forum, which she's perfectly competent to do. We'll look at it as a board. We'll have a chance to comment. And then we'll, we'll file it. And I'd like to request that we get back to an agenda that we can follow and not have conversations. Just gather, we should all be able to make comment, but let's please stick to the agenda and go about this.
Your hand was raised during the agenda, Laura. It wasn't recognized, and I don't want it to be brushed over.
Okay, the, the agenda item was to, on the form, but you can move forward on how we want to proceed. We'll put it on the agenda the next time. Okay. We still have time. So I think what we would start now, Sarah, if you wanted to take some time to talk about our next proposed work plan for Springtown meeting and your thoughts on that. And if we can get through some of it tonight, that'd be great. Otherwise, at seven o'clock, we'll move on to the.
Do you want to, can I share my screen?
Yes. Where are you?
Oh, I have to be signed in, sorry.
Don't see you.
I'm not signed in. I'm sorry. Sorry. Not. Well, I think I can actually, I can do without sharing my screen. So we I actually think that, that a work plan for any of the actions that we're taking, perhaps related to the prior discussion is useful. And so I laid out for us the schedule. Share my screen. The schedule of meetings prior to the next town meeting. So working backwards, town meeting is April 3rd. I checked with Greg and the warrant would need to be finalized on March 6th as, at the select board meeting, which puts us with a public hearing at the latest on February 27th. I'll put this in the planning board packet, which means the, we need to post a hearing on February 6th. That hearing could be more encompassing than what we finally present. Can't be less. So, so I proposed that on the 13th of February, we would finalize topics for the public hearing. And that we would have a special working session if needed on January 30th. January has five Mondays, just so lucky us. And then I also proposed a couple of subcommittee meetings of Chris and me posted meetings to just discuss proposals to the board. And then working back even further to our next meeting, January 9th, is that we make a decision about sort of go, no-go, or change our position on the articles. So I, you know, we've passed, successfully passed that town meeting, four of the 12 that we had proposed. Two, I think, are administrative, adult entertainment and section 12. And six, the remaining six are what I called policy changes. So I think personally, I think it's probably optimistic to try to do all of those at a annual town meeting. But I think we had talked about the administrative ones being fairly straightforward. Mary has identified a number of typos in the existing bylaw, which we can and should address in the, in the town meeting. And then perhaps we can talk in January about what I'm, what I'm proposing is subcommittee meets and make some recommendations back to the full board on how to proceed with the others, those others being residential conservation cluster amendments, a new senior housing bylaw, amendments to the non-performing section. And I say that because they were amendments, but they were really, they were presented as a rewrite. A new section for ADUs, the ADU removal of the 1990, 1984 double lot and parking requirements, changing the parking requirements and the family living quarters for family members in addition to an employee. So those are the topics that we would be talking about. So I think it's a pretty aggressive schedule. I personally have a hard time. I don't think that select board will want us to take up all of those policy changes, but perhaps we can select a limited number or a limited one or two. But I think we can do that. So I guess I would like to ask for a motion to have Chris and me continue as the subcommittee and that we would post some meetings. And that people pencil in a January 30th working session on this topic.
So moved. There are seconds.
Okay, well, if you want some discussion?
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Laura?
Yes.
Yes, Sarah?
Yes. Christina? Oh, Christina.
I guess I'm a little concerned about the transparency of this. I don't know, understand why we just can't do this in open meeting, why we need you and Chris to drive this. Could you just help me through that?
Well, I did, I'm sorry, you can't see the sheet that I had here passed out. I do have a subcommittee with a posted meeting on the week of January 9th and the week of February 6th as proposals. So I agree that they should be posted meetings and certainly any member of the board can come. So we will, you know, schedule them at a time that is a logical time for people to be able to come. I just think it's too much work to take up in our regular meetings. And the idea would be that Chris and I would, as we've done before, come up with some straw proposals and recommend them to the board for discussion. So the final decision rests with the board, of course. So the other piece that I think is important is to remember that as of now, we have voted to move forward those remaining eight articles. And so therefore, you know, whether we, now the timeframe has changed, but we should either move them forward or revise our statement of action.
Right. And I think the public hearings all need to be redone. So
Absolutely.
The public to make sure that they're still on board too, and make sure that we hear any further comment. I guess I, I'm just a little concerned about just high level conversation. Are we still involving Bobrowski? Can everyone on the planning board, is there a quorum issue? If the entire board wanted to attend, I guess those are just my high level concerns.
I don't think there's a quorum issue if we post a meeting.
Okay, I'm fine with it then, yes.
Laura?
I had the same question as one of Christina's, which is whether we would have Bobrowski or some land use lawyer involved. As I think we all have been working on this a long time, but then have a great familiarity, but none of us are land use lawyers.
So the only thing I, at least from my, my opinion, and this is strictly my opinion, is that we would confine our work in this next phase to the matters that we've already talked about. We wouldn't be creating new, with the exception of some edits, you know, fixing typos and that kind of thing. And therefore, we have had the input of Mark Bobrowski on the substance of those. In terms of presenting them at town meeting, that's another discussion we could have. So, and then we also do have town council who can help us with.
Right. And part of the reason I'm asking is there's some original language he put forward a long time ago. We debated it. We made some changes.
You did review all of the articles.
He's reviewed it. So I'm not saying we, you know, varied from that necessarily. But if some of the questions are, does having, you know, no five acre minimum per RCCs or something make us different than other towns? It might be helpful to have some context about, you know, here's what I've seen at our towns possibly. Betsy could provide that kind of context too. I don't know. But I just think outside of us as a planning board might be helpful to have a little more context about what elements of it are useful, typical, that kind of thing.
Well, one of the things I had proposed, and I took it off the list, but we certainly could add it, is for the January 9th meeting, people think about what questions have come to mind. And then we can try to get the answers to those questions or way, way down as we discuss this. So I think that's a good idea.
We still have a contract with Mr. Bobrowski. There's still some funding available. So I don't think we're precluded from that.
But I don't, I, I'm, I'm, my proposal doesn't indicate one way or another. Okay, with the motion.
Okay, so the motion passed 5-0.
Okay.
All right, thanks. Is that it, Sarah, on that?
Yep, I will post this for our next meeting and add in the homework of all of us to think about what issues have come to mind since then, so we can kind of consolidate a list. And then the proposal for the next meeting is that we decide on a go, no-go or change on administrative section 12, adult entertainment. And I propose non-conforming use, because in my mind, that's an easy discussion, but maybe it's not. And then we take up the policy ones, which non-forming use is a policy on the policy list. I just picked one.
Clarifying question?
Yeah.
Are you suggesting that we all get together and say which one of these on the policy list we would bump up?
I think that we can, that could be a discussion. I think Chris and I, the idea is that Chris and I would make some recommendations. But certainly, input is most welcome. We can have some of that discussion later tonight.
In the short timeframe, we need to get the simplest ones up.
Well, I'm actually thinking we might be able to have that discussion maybe later after this parking study. We want to come back to it tonight.
Yeah, I'm working on a memo to the board for me about senior housing. I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about what senior housing entails, what the various options are, why it's important to allow it in every zoning district. So as soon as I have time to do it, we'll put it on the sharepoint.
Great.
Okay. I have 10 minutes.
Want to talk about those things then?
Yeah, that'd be good. We can talk about the items.
Somebody has their hand up. Betsy has her.
Betsy, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, so under 40A, section 6, there's a provision that basically says the board of selectmen are supposed to finalize the warrant. And they provide a list of articles that the board is supposed to be holding hearings on. So it seems like the timeframes here are very tight. So if somebody put in a petition article, say, the last day of what was allowed, the planning board may not have enough time to hold the hearing prior to town meeting.
That would be for petitioner's articles, not for zoning, right?
Well, it could be a petitioner's article that's a zoning article.
So, well, I don't, the, the question I asked Greg was when would the warrant close for, maybe Greg can answer this. Petitioners' articles may have a sooner deadline. Greg is.
Greg, did you have any help us out?
Yeah, so the petition articles are due 60 days prior to April 3rd. So they, they will be due the first of February. That's by our, that's by our town charter. It's a by, it's a bylaw.
Okay, so then the board of selectmen are supposed to, okay, so I suppose that could work. But there is a provision in Mass General law that basically says the board of selectmen is supposed to hand a list of articles for the planning board to hear, to the planning board, and then the planning board holds a public, advertises and holds a public hearing. So I guess what happens is this, some of these are going to have to happen before the warrant closes. Has that been the protocol in the past?
Yes.
Yes, but if they're, if they're initiated by the planning board.
The planning board can hold the hearing anytime.
Correct.
Right. Okay, okay. It just is a very tight timeframe here.
Thank you. Understood. Sarah, did you want to talk about which ones?
Well, maybe we can, I think we it, it would be my, my recommendation that we proceed with section 12. I think it's ready to go, maybe. And that we move that forward to April town meeting.
That's the adults.
No, that, and section 12 is the administrative changes. So I don't, I guess I could make a motion to that effect and then we can discuss it. So I'll make, I'll move that we actually move section 12 administrative changes forward to the April town meeting, at the April town meeting. So that's my motion. There's no second to that, okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
My point is I think it's the kind of final, you know, tidying up. We did renumber it, so that's good. Section, it was section seven, now section 12. But there were some just administrative things that got tidied up in that in the new draft. And I think it's pretty straightforward. I don't think it's a highly debatable issue. I don't, I certainly haven't heard any complaints about it, but we certainly, it'd be great to have Betsy look at it with fresh eyes. And we could do that in advance of a public hearing, so.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Laura?
So the administration section, you said, contains some typos, but then down at the bottom, we've got other typos and other administrators.
Right, so separate. So one of the things that, if you recall, there was an amendment to the motion on town meeting. Oh, you were not telling me. There are a couple of them. And then there, Mary has identified a number of typos in the sections that we were not taking up at town meeting. So we should do those as well.
Right, and we're going to try to do those separately so that we can get the typos separate and understandable for people and then talk about the content.
Of course, these could all be in the same article.
We could have them in the same article or not. We, how we format it is a matter of strategy, I think. Okay, okay.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Yeah, I, this is Christina, just jumping in because you can't, it, doesn't it just make sense to have this cleaned up and then vote on it as, when it's cleaned up? Why are we voting on it if it's not clear?
No, my point is only we're voting that we would move it forward. We're not, this isn't a final vote to put it on the warrant, because you're right. It needs, we want Betsy to look at it. We want to read it again. We want to, but, but as opposed to tabling it.
This is a vote and just move it forward.
Okay. I mean, I think we should clean it up and have the actual document before we move it forward.
Okay, or maybe it's an intent to move it forward if I change my motion to indicate an intent to move it forward to spend, to spend the time to clean it up and then to put it on a public hearing.
Exactly. I mean, we didn't spend the time before. We provided a sloppy document. Get it right, get it clean, and then move it forward. I just don't like these messy documents. Just do the work and get it right.
Was there a second on the amendment to have the intent to move? Okay, so just on the intent, any further discussion? Roll call of Laura?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Chair, yes, Christina?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, and the second one, I would move, move, move to intend to move it forward to the public hearing and then to the town meeting would be adult entertainment. That's something we need to do. Again, pretty straightforward. Second?
Is there a second on that? Any discussion on moving, the intent to move adult entertainment, meaning into the LCD?
Regulate adult entertainment.
Roll call vote.
Yes. Betsy has her hand up. Oh.
Who has her hand up?
Betsy did.
Betsy, go ahead.
So where would the adult entertainment district be located?
It's already only allowed in the LCD.
Okay.
But it has no regulations currently, so you can do whatever you want.
Roll call vote on the intent to move adult entertainment.
Yes.
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 Chair votes, yes, Christina?
Yes.
Okay. Um.
Right now?
Well, the other one probably takes a little longer than two minutes. So we'll, we'll hold on that one for a moment. We'll come back to it at the end.
Okay, two minutes left. Has anyone read the minutes of 9:26 or 10:04?
I did. So move to approve the minutes of 10:04 as written. As written.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I was looking at my notes about things I wrote down, one that I think I wasn't at, but I'm forgetting which of the two meetings it was, so whichever one I wasn't at, I won't vote on. All right.
Okay. Any further discussion? Vote to approve, uh, yes?
Yes.
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 For the one you were. Move all of the minutes.
Christina, vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, minutes approved.
And then, oh, do we vote both of them? Ten, nine twenty-six?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion was for both, and Laura's just.
I think it says which one I was presenting on, I apologize, I don't have that part of me, I can't remember. Uh, you were present at the nine twenty-six. Okay.
Okay, seven o'clock. So, um, with Christina being here, I think we have enough to vote on the floats. But I don't think with Mary not here and, um, Sarah. Recusing herself, we don't have enough to, um, vote on the Manchester Parks and Rec.
I do have a question about that.
Yes.
I'm actually looking at section nine of chapter forty A, and it says, a special permit. Issued by a special permit granting authority shall require two-thirds vote of the boards. Uh, with more than five member, a vote of at least four members of a five-member board. And unanimous vote of a three-member board. So right now, aren't we a six-member board?
You're a seven-member board.
So I think Greg got a clarification on this, um.
All right.
Greg or Betsy, did you want to explain?
My understanding is that Greg got a determination from legal counsel and that five. Uh, votes were required for a special permit.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. Oh, one other question, sorry. Is, uh, and if we fail to act, we take no action. Am I correct that if we take no action within ninety days, it's constructively approved?
Once we close the.
No, that's not correct. You have not closed the public hearing. You've continued the public hearing to date certain. From the time you close the public hearing, you have ninety days to get a written decision to the town clerk.
Okay, thank you.
Christina?
So I was just curious, um, that you got opinion on the voting requirements. I think Mary had a question about the agenda. Do we get a legal opinion on that?
On the agenda?
And posting, um.
Um, there was, um, a legal opinion from town council, which I thought was put in your packets.
Greg?
I did not see it.
Um, yes, uh, what Betsy just said is correct. So legal counsel did review the requirements for the hearing notice. And reviewed it against the requirements in forty A. And issued an opinion that I, I passed along. I believe it is in the, uh, agenda packet. Um, that indicated that it was, uh, that the hearing notice was adequate.
Okay, so.
So, um, sorry to interrupt, but, um, the Audi from, Audi from MAPC is on. Um, the Zoom meeting. Oh, he can hear now. Good. Okay, never mind. So Audi from MAPC is, uh, available.
Okay, so, uh, again, a change of plans with, uh, Christina here and, um. We're able to vote on these floating docks, so, uh. Uh, Audi may, we have to put her off a little bit, just until we, we get through these. But I'd like to open a continued public hearing on a special permit application. For the Manchester Parks and Rec. This is to construct a youth athletic field with twenty-five parking spaces on the side of the old burned, burned dump at one fifty-sixth, one second. At this time, since we don't have a quorum to vote this, I'd like to continue the public hearing until our next meeting, which is on January ninth.
At seven o'clock.
At seven o'clock. Do I need to vote of the board or?
So I'm, uh, moved that we continue the public hearing until January eighth at seven o'clock.
Okay. Roll call vote, uh, chair says yes. You're abstaining? Yes, Laura says yes. Christina? Christina, you on mute?
Sorry, yes.
But this time I'd like to open the continued public hearing on the special permit application for Crocker Boatyard. The Harbor Advisory Committee met on December seventh. The meeting was attended by me, Sarah Creighton and town planner Betsy Ware. Know the application, the applicant in attendance and do have, and do you have any comments at this time? I will turn to Betsy to advise the planning board on the results of the Harbor Advisory Committee meeting.
So the Harbor Advisory Committee, I got their notes today around noonish. I, um, asked, uh, Gail to put them on the. Um, in the SharePoint and, um, they voted, um, to approve Crocker's boatyard. For the expansion of the dockage area.
Thank you.
And now that I have their notes, I would suggest that I may. Add some additional language into the decision, um, that kind of strengthens the decision. For example, on the first and second page, add that the Harbor Advisory Committee commented, and this is what their comments were.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, any comments from the planning board? Uh, Sarah has a question.
Um, this is a question for, uh, consultant Susan, thank you. When you, um, presented about the chapter ninety-one license. You indicated, and I looked it up, that there were two pathways for the same structure. One is if it's, uh, related to a water-related, um, use, and the other would be. If it's related to something else. Um, and is that something else, like condos that would then have docks out front? Or what's the something else? What's the other path?
If you have a use that includes.
Maybe you stand, kind of, kind of audience here.
Under the chapter ninety-one regulations, there are two types of uses that they define. Water-dependent uses, which are uses that are, that need to be on the water, and depend on the water for the location. And then the other uses are non-water dependent uses. They don't need to be on the water. Sometimes you might have a residential development that has docks, so it has some water-dependent uses and some non-water-dependent uses. But the chapter ninety-one regulations would define that whole project as a non-water-dependent use. Even though this water-dependent, okay, and there are different standards for water-dependent versus non-water.
Okay, so then my question is for Betsy. Um, is it possible to convince, to have a, um, piece of these, either of these, uh, permit? These special permits, um, say that they are, um. Approved or relevant, or whatever the right word is, um, so long as they qualify as water-dependent uses within the chapter ninety-one definition. My thought is, in sometime in the future, um, the boatyards, which I think we are trying to encourage. The business of boatyards, the servicing of boats for the town, and those uses might become. Waterfront condos. And it seems to me then we'd want to take another look at the use because. That premise, at least that's important to me, for supporting the, the broad, uh, business interests. Small business interests and, uh, water service, you know, water service interests are important. And therefore would change. So I guess my question for Betsy is, would that be an appropriate addition to a special permit? Or I guess for the board?
And I can add a little to that too.
Yeah, maybe the applicant has a comment, I don't know.
I don't see any problem with adding it as a condition of approval that, and encouraging water-dependent uses. Given the history of both of these properties, um, it could be put in as, um, a finding. And, um, it could also be put in as a condition.
Yeah, okay, and if I may, the license itself will state that it's a water-dependent use. And any change to the use that's authorized under the license would require either an amended license or a new license. And if, if a change were to be a non-water-dependent use, it would require.
So it's consistent, so to put that into our special permit is consistent with the, um, the, um, chapter ninety-one. Christina has her hand up.
Thanks, um, in the decisions, both of them, I didn't see anything, um, addressing the public benefit.
Um, so in the Crocker decision. Um, one of the conditions was that, wait a minute, hang on a minute.
Number six.
One of the conditions was that the Manchester By the Sea Lobster Fleet can use the expanded floating dock area off-season. And that they were going to contribute, um, funding for design and fabrication of safety signs for paddleboard. And kayakers in the harbor. Uh, conditions four and conditions six.
Uh, so I was saying about, I've been kind of tied up with some personal business, I haven't really been focused on this. Um, what occurred to me today, uh, part of the deal with the fishermen was also. Whenever possible to maintain access to Morse Pier. With my tugboat does not ice break and keep employees, I've also done that for the town, which I would continue to do as long as I have a tug.
Were you suggesting that, uh, in lieu of the helping the lobster fleet?
No, in addition to.
Okay.
If you want to throw that in on the.
I also think.
I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
So I think the addition of the, um, position of a, uh, offer to, um, use. Uh, the Crocker's tugboat to break up the ice, um, and maintain access to the harbor in winter conditions. So long as the tugboat remains in the Crocker's Boatyard Fleet or something like that. Um.
On the last project.
Yeah, I think we should.
I lost my water.
And, and serviceable. Um, so the other thing is we might want to. I mean, right now the lobster fleet is how many, do we want to limit that to a number, uh, you know, up to five boats or something like that, or just? I mean. Not sure the lobster fleet. Okay.
It's slowly gone down.
Yeah, so you're not concerned that you're gonna have a fleet of thirty or something? Okay.
Laura? I have some questions, and there, um, there's a few, and they're somewhat unrelated to each other, but just for clarifying. So, um, I agree with everything that's been said so far by the harbor, um, by our harbor master, um, Bayon. He's not here tonight, is he?
No.
Uh, Bayon's online, I think.
Oh, is he?
Uh, maybe not. Oh, yeah, he's online.
Great, um, so he's talked about the benefits to the harbor of these expansion and, um. Also, um, the proposal, I forget if it was Crocker's or Manchester Marine, to, um. Fix the floats on the opposite side of the channel so that they're all not swinging. And is that something that we were looking to condition so that, uh, so that it would make the channel safer for all boaters? Didn't see. That's in the Manchester Marine one. Okay, so we're just discussing Crockers right now, okay, or I don't know if it is in it, but it should be in it. Okay. This question, I think, uh, these two questions, I think, apply to both. Um, if there is a harbor master plan at some point. And that, if these two proposals get approved and the harbor master plan, um, happens later. And there are findings that say that some adjustment needs to be made for the safety or the attractiveness of the harbor, whatever that might be. What do we do then, um, in terms of, you know, if there are some findings at that point? I know I'm asking sort of a speculative question, but I'm just wondering because it's been brought up about, you know, the need for a harbor master plan. Did the, did the harbor board just address that at all?
Then so. The master plan is a lot for a few years, I don't think.
Okay, I mean, these are pilings that are drilled, you know, or. Right. Put into the, yeah, so I think. I think this is, uh, the chance to. Um, and my other question, so it sounds like that's, uh, something that's on the longer-term horizon. There was a, uh. A word in both of the decisions, draft decisions regarding the, um, that there's no negative environmental impacts. On the, um, on the floor or on, uh, shellfish or marine life. And that wildlife habitats and other natural resources use are deemed, um, uh, appropriate by the Special Permit Granting Authority, and that's us. Um, and we're not really in, we don't have the expertise to determine that. So, uh, perhaps Susan, could you tell us how that's determined?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's in your, well, bylaw, this is finally what you have to make, but sure. We did get approved by the Conservation Commission, okay, and that is a topic of several of the resource areas. None of these projects are happening in selfish areas, I mean, okay, so, for outside of the map shelters.
Great. And then the last question was, um, for, uh, the additional signage for safety for paddleboards and other paddlers. That sounds like a great idea. Was there anything else that was, um, discussed by Bay, Bayon or the harbor, uh, board in terms of safety? For the smaller vessels like paddlers that needs to be addressed?
That I know of.
Yeah, um, so I raised that with the harbor committee and they. Didn't feel that there was a, um, uh. Need that could be addressed, nor did they think that this was going to increase traffic to the extent that it would cause significantly increased safety. It is something that I worry about. You add, you know, ten more cars on the road, it makes it less safe for bicyclists and pedestrians. It's sort of the same, um, thought, so I guess I would, would suggest that. Um, in addition to funding that there be, you know, I think that the, the signage for kayakers is, there's always too many signs. But I do think that there are some key places where kayakers could have signs along a whole channel that says, stay out of the channel. Like kayakers, there's a channel, stay out of it, you know, avoid being run over, something that's. So I do think that there's something creative there that could be done, that might save one person, you know, like. You know, help, uh, just, I saw a situation last summer that was kind of near disaster, so. So I do think that there's an opportunity for the, for some education of people in handcraft. Yes.
If I may, also, I think the two projects combined are gonna create a channel that people can be visible to people. Whereas right now, you don't really know where it is. So I think that's gonna help in terms of safety.
Uh, thank you, those are my questions.
Christina, do you have any questions or thoughts?
I do, um, so I guess, you know, going back to we use this as, you know, our, our sounding or founding document. Our master plan, it does call for a harbor master plan. So this is the second time we're expanding, this seems significant. Um, is there a reason why we're just not going ahead with the master plan, Greg? If you're on, buy on, like, when is this going to happen? Is there people, is there funding needed? Like, why isn't this happening? I'm not really comfortable with going forward with this without this master plan.
Well, it is, it is moving forward, we've reached out to the Urban Harbors Institute, they're uh, providing the town with an estimate for what it would cost to do this. Harbor Master Plan will take a year to two years to complete. That's pretty typical for projects of this nature. And uh, steps are being taken to uh, create one for the town.
Any more comments or questions?
I have a question for Byon, are there gonna be any changes to the channel markings themselves as a result of this?
So the only channel markings right now are the federally maintained ones, uh, those will not change. That doesn't mean that we can't, uh, through Coast Guard, put in what are called private aids to navigation, that's what our swim buoys are, that's what the no wake buoys are. Uh, that's what the two buoys marking Bow Bell Ledge are, so uh, if the town determined that it would be wise to put in some smaller town maintained green and red channel markers, uh, we could. To be honest with you, those would have been, would be more helpful uh, right now with a channel that isn't always well delineated. It will be much, much more obvious if these two projects move forward where the channel is. But we could put in buoyage if people determine that that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you. More questions?
The, I I would like to actually see that the decision add one more condition, which is something along the lines of um, that uh, um vehicles associated with this addition shall be parked on Crocker's Boatyard and Manchester Marine, you know, uh, property and not on the public street.
They'd be parked on, on.
That doesn't mean you'll park there. Yes, park, uh, part, then parking. And they have enough parking, it's obvious, but.
So they're parking on the property as opposed to the public way?
Yeah.
Ron, I have a follow up question, I mean, is it appropriate to put in this decision that no more expansion will happen until a complete Manchester master harbor master plan? Is complete? Does that sound reasonable, Betsy?
My concern is that if we don't get funding, um, then that could be the years could be pushed out, so.
We can get the funding at town meeting, right, so we don't have to rely on grants. So I, this is the second expansion without a plan, there is concerns of public taking a plan, I'm not really convinced of the public benefit, so I am concerned of this ongoing expansion without a plan.
Becky, have a comment on that?
Uh, yes, I do, um, I just, I just want to say that I, I don't think it's logical to say that money would be gotten at a town meeting and not anywhere else. I I just think to say that we would be taking money um, is not appropriate. Thank you.
Wouldn't further expansion be subject to a special permit and viewed by us again anyway? Um, just thinking that, you know, we don't think we need to put that in as a condition as we will have the ability to condition it ourselves if another special permit for expansion comes our way, that's my thought.
Chip, uh, Skip has.
Skip, go ahead.
Just the definition between expansion and maintenance. Something happens, a storm wipes out the docks. Yeah, anything we just it it don't limit the two bowyards, I mean, other other commercial, I mean, what we did in Essex was we put it, like, one year more, don't want any new businesses in town, we figured out some zoning. Um, to put a special condition, I mean, I don't know if it's within your right or not, or just the definition between expansion and maintenance should be included behind that decision.
Under the chapter ninety one license and the special permitting and order conditions, we asked for a reconfiguration zone. So you can reconfigure within that zone, you can't expand, okay, but we can't expand into the chapter ninety one license either, unless we go back.
Even the reconfiguration would be subject to.
No, we we can reconfigure, we have to send a letter to the the waterways, but you cannot add to the square footage of the floats. So you can reconfigure if you need to or want to, but can't add.
So the, to Laura's point, if there's, if the harbor plan does uh, find that some reconfiguration is uh, needed and could be done within the existing pilings, then it could be done. I was incorrect, I guess. Yeah, it's a little technical.
What about uh other changes to upland on land facilities? Where restriction, but.
That's not.
I'm just making sure.
Just not subject to this. Not subject to this, no.
So, okay, um, we've done.
Yeah, I'm sorry, can I ask one more question, who, is there a, is there a next step with the chapter ninety one or who determines that the public benefits are appropriate, is that NASTEP or, you know, what happened?
So you haven't applied for the chapter ninety one license yet. And they, they look at public purpose. Their their primary concerns for water dependence projects and navigation safety. And this public comment period, and the public notice that's issued in the local paper, so people can.
I guess my, I think that that's all reasonable, certainly the process. And I think the signage for paddlers is a great benefit, I um I, I wonder whether through the harbor master processor, you know, are there other things that we can continue to do to make the harbor safer and more comfortable for the smaller boats as we increase the um larger boat traffic, and I'm not saying that all has to happen in this project, but we should be mindful of it, so. I I don't know if the chapter ninety one process will reveal more or there will be more demands made at that point, but you know, I, I think the, the signage is a is a good benefit, I don't know if that's gonna be deemed, you know, if that's efficient, I don't know.
So. All right, Brian, go ahead.
Yeah.
Uh, so the, the single biggest thing that's going to help the paddleboarders be safe uh, after signage, which any information that we can get to the uh these boaters who are, uh, in most cases, entry level boaters is education, education, education. And I guess I, I might suggest that on the signage, we, we recommend it and steer them towards it uh, through maybe a link on the signage, so. Uh, just, just throwing that out there, I, I, education is the real answer to making them safe.
Thank you, Brian, not Betsy.
Um, I just have a comment in that um, any improvement that they do are tied to the plans and anything beyond that. They have to come back to the planning board. So um, to address Christina's comments, they can't expand or do anything beyond what it was in their application.
Okay, so let's moving forward, um, this project has been endorsed by the Concom, the Harbor Master unanimous vote by the Harbor Advisory Committee, and we've certainly vetted with conditions on the decision. This, this, we need all five members to vote in the affirmative for this to move forward. So at this point, I would like to take a straw poll of members on moving this forward. Great.
Um, I will vote yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go yes, Christina.
My concern was not addressed.
Excuse me?
My concern was not addressed. This is the second time that this has come in front of the board, I wanted some kind of, and it's not just conditions on a new special permit. This is the second time the expansion has happened, I feel like this is not our place, we need a harbor plan. I'm concerned about the expansion, so Betsy, I understand that nothing can happen, I, I, that's clear to me. My point is, I don't want any more expansion to come in front of us at all until a harbor plan is done, and I'm not hearing that.
Yeah.
Um, we did have a private dock, at least one, three, two private docks since I've been on the board, which represent an expansion of harbor activities. So I think that we've made a precedent and um, and I think we can expect that other um private entities would come before us, these are private. So um, in the absence of um as Skip suggests, you know, a memoratorium on um harbor expansion. It seems to me that we don't have the authority to condition a permit on a plan that the applicant has no um ability to affect when that plan's gonna happen.
No, and I think you actually nailed it right there, they were private and this is commercial and that's my concern, I feel like there's a taking advantage in a commerce, not taking advantage, I, and that's not how I mean, I think this actually could be a benefit, but I just feel like this is the second time that this, these marinas have expanded and we don't have a plan as the town, that's my concern. So it's just specifically for these two marinas, not the town in general, I just want to that they're not expanding until we have a harbor master plan, that's my concern.
Mr. Fettishfield.
So just to add a little more specificity to the harbor master plan, the select board has voted to proceed with such a plan. Um, the proposed FY twenty four budget will have funding um, recommended to the voters to approve to move forward with the plan. Um, so the idea is to move forward this, this winter, um, and then get the funding at, at the spring annual town meeting and to continue forward.
Christina, was that satisfying?
I just feel like we're always playing catch up, I just don't understand why we're always three steps behind. So I, no, it really doesn't, like, I guess this is the second time, this is expanded and I just don't see an end. And I wanted a commitment that there was a pause until we finish this, and I'm not hearing that. I mean, it's great, thank you, Greg, for expanding upon that, but that's not what I was looking for.
So what would it take to change your mind on this?
I really want to hear from both marinas, that they have no intention in coming back until this harbor master plan says that they think that's a good idea. I think we've pushed the envelope here, I don't think the public benefit is great, I think it's fine, I don't think it's amazing, but I think these need to be laid out in more detail before we, as a planning board, go forward, don't think it's really our space. Um, that's my concern.
Greg.
So it's certainly in your purview to say that no further expansion will take place going forward until a master plan is in place. That doesn't prevent you from approving what's before you, but you certainly could stipulate that.
That's what I just asked, and I kind of got shot down, so we're taking the straw and I said I didn't, you know, I wasn't appeased with that, so.
Greg, would that need to be part of the special permit decision or could it be a side letter um uh, that was a compendium or or um?
It, it could be either way.
And I want to be clear, if there's some damage and you want to rebuild, A, okay, like, that's not my point, but like rebuilding and expanding to this extent to me. I feel like the town needs a master plan. I do think it's a good idea, I just think we're kind of shooting in the dark without a plan, and like I said, we're playing catch up. We want this vibrant harbor community, we should have a plan before we start approving things and putting in docks and, I mean, we're talking about putting in more docks and applying for more grants. So it's just, we're doing, doing, doing without a plan.
Becky, have a comment?
Yes, I do, thank you, Ron, um, don't any plans have to come before you anyway, so the planning board would, I guess my question is um, to be saying that you cannot do any more expansion without having an understanding of circumstances that might change. As opposed to putting that into hard writing, it has to come before you all anyway, right? So you would have the opportunity to approve or deny without setting in stone a situation that might end up being detrimental. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky, Brian.
Uh, just an observation that uh, the area of these two projects is in front of these two facilities, no one else is going to develop there. And also my observation is this is pretty much the extent of space for which these expansions could happen. Any further expansion would start to impede on moorings and the channel, which for me have been you know, the, the cutoff point. We have not negatively impacted anything yet, any further expansion, I would have to say now we're, we're impacting other users of the harbor, and I don't see that with these projects. No one else is going to develop there.
All right, thank you, uh, Kathy Bellata.
Hey, uh, just a quick clarification, it was my understanding and maybe Byon. I'm sorry, can you hear me? Sorry, um, it was my understanding and maybe Byon can confirm, but part of the uh, reason for supporting these expansions was it would improve the safety of the navigation in, in the harbor because of the, of the way uh, the boats moved in the wind, et cetera. Byon can do a better job of explaining that, but I just want to um, I, I'd be concerned if we were delaying a potential safety improvement one to two years out, so I just, maybe I misunderstood, but maybe Byon could, could speak to that.
Yeah, right, I've said all along. I'm sorry.
Also, it's time for me to hear.
Sure, so uh, from my perspective, navigation, if these projects move forward greatly improve navigation, Skip actually has been out in front of that with his work at my request to uh, help the uh, mooring holders convert to bound stern at my request in the Cove and then to realign those moorings. It's, it's safer now and if these projects move forward, it will be even safer. These projects are a benefit to the harbor from a safety standpoint.
Christina, go ahead.
I guess I just want to be really clear, I'm not asking for this to be postponed, I do think it's a good project. My concern is that this is the second expansion without a harbor plan, so alls I'm wanting is a commitment that this will not come in front of us, I kind of just don't want us any board until there's a harbor plan to approve any expansion, and I don't think a storm or anything like that is it, I'm just talking about a true expansion without a harbor plan. That's what I'm asking for to be put in a condition, and Greg, you tell me how to do it, but that is my concern. That this is the second expansion and I do think it's good, I think it's expanding jobs, it's, it's doing that, but I am concerned that we're going forward with a lot of things on the harbor without a plan, so I'm not postponing anything for two years. I just don't want the opportunity to come in front of us that we have to condition something, I think we need to hit a pause. I'm saying, I think this is good, but put a condition on it that there's no more expansion until the plan is done, I don't think that's too unreasonable, thank you.
The applicant has to stand up.
Uh, Mr. Crocker.
So this, so this, what she's asking for is no future expansion beyond this current project in front of you tonight. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And. So it is what only implies to check on anyone. Projects on the water. If I wanted to do something like building on, change my building on land. I can move ahead with that.
No issue.
Yeah. Quite honestly, my project on the water. Is sort of the maximum. What I can do on the water, it would take me two years to get a premise anyway, so. At this point, going forward beyond this project, I'm okay with the condition.
So you're, um. Sounds like you're okay with putting that, um, sure, condition on.
Can I make, can I make a suggestion for the condition? Um, if we were to add a condition that this, uh, um. No further, uh, application for special permit. That would extend this use. Um, shall be, uh, considered by the planning board, um, until such time as the harbor master plan has been completed or. Three years have passed, because I, I feel like I want, I hate to burden. Um, a private, uh, you know. A taxpayer, um, with that, unless we kind of limit it to a certain.
As long as, as long as it doesn't imply repairs and maintenance.
No, I mean, I didn't extend, uh, expansion, so.
Float expansion.
Yeah, no float expansion would be, uh, yeah, no float or, or further, or even, um. Additional expansion for, under special permit review, just sort of additional expansion.
Laura.
Well, we started off talking about the Crocker project. I don't know that we've talked about Marine, the Manchester Marine yet, but I, I do wanna, and we're talking about all these conditions, and we did. Discuss with Byon, I apologize for jumping ahead, about the fixed floats on the other side, so we're running these larger conversations about conditioning the development. Of the whole thing, it sounds like. While we haven't yet had the conversation about fixing the. Say, I, I'm totally with Tina about the need for a harbor plan. I think it's really important. I'm very glad to hear from Greg, we started it. I do think it's very important to Manchester to support our blue economy. I mean, our, our healthy working harbor is, is critical to who the, to who we are as a town. Um, and I, I have to put a lot of my faith in Byon and his expertise as our harbor master. He says that it's an improvement to safety and navigation. And that there's not a negative impact on the harbor, and he too, I'm sure, will have. You know, um, play a, play an important role as we get into the harbor master plan, but if the, there's an improvement. Um, to the safety of all boaters, small and large, uh, private and commercial, then I. I at least, you know, I'm taking that as sort of the bigger, the biggest, um, factor here is the. Is the testimony from Byon.
Okay, so the language Sarah suggested of no expansion for the next two, two years.
I said three, three harbor master plan or three years, whichever is sooner.
Christina, would that be acceptable, that language?
Yes, thank you, Sarah.
Hey, uh, Betsy, you have that language?
Got it.
Uh, any, um, motion, motion for that?
So I move that we, uh, approve the special permit of Crocker's Boatyard fifteen Ashland Avenue. It's a special permit application for the expansion of docks, um, with the, um. Draft decision as a bit, as with amendments discussed tonight, um. Will, will we approve this to the draft? Will, um.
I think we'll prove the draft, right, Betsy, right?
So I'm gonna write a draft. I'm gonna write all the, um, conditions that you've added. And I'm gonna give it to Ron to review, and if he views that it's sufficient, he will sign it, and the town clerk will get it stamped in.
Okay, great. So that's my motion.
Your second.
I don't understand why we don't see the draft and vote on the draft.
Final draft.
Because you don't have a meeting for another month. And I think it was felt that, um, they wanted to get going, but I'm certainly willing to do it that way, too. But conversely, I had Gary at the first meeting I attended saying, why don't we vote it tonight? So I'm kinda confused about the process here. I mean, normally your planning board, one member makes, writes the decision, the other one checks it, and then it's done. So that's what I'm proposing.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
And we have a draft. Yeah, we have a draft with, we've just added essentially parking and. The time-limited expansion, comments from the harbor board.
And you wanted language about the tugboat.
Oh, and the tugboat.
The tugboat, yeah, breaking up the ice.
Okay.
So motions were made and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Um, roll call, Sarah?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay. Um, sorry, I made. Addie come earlier. Uh, so, uh, Betsy, do I need to close the public hearing then?
Um, yes, you can close the, actually, we should, yeah, close the public hearing.
We could close the public hearing.
The motion made to move close the public hearing on Crocker's Boilyard, and may be seconded. Any discussion? Roll call?
Yes.
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 Christina?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Close. Now I'd like to open the continuation of the public hearing for Manchester Marine, voting Doc section seven point five, four point one, point ten. Again, this says the same thing. The Harbor Advisory Committee met on December seventh. Uh, he was attended by myself, Sarah Creighton, and Town Planner Betsy Ware. I acknowledge the application, uh, applicant in attendance. Does the applicant have any comments at this time?
The applicant's advocate, he has a condition about the bottom-held floating docks in its place.
So. Thank you. Can we just, um, talk about what the light would be for Betsy, so we're clear on? Maybe you can help us. Um, say what the words are.
Yeah, I mean, you could. What was the question? Discussion has said, you know, what's necessary for the safety and navigation as the project proceeds?
They're responding, yeah, thank you. My floating docks, which Byon said the combination of the floating docks on the opposite hand of the channel, right, and the expansion on the marine side. Yes, those things together would make the channel safer, so that none of the docks are swinging.
One thing that we had talked about internally out at the site that day was, um, you know, we have the three fifty-foot long ones. If we could have the float, the bottom-held floating docks that are. Opposite those, because we don't know if they're ready to do the whole thing right now. At least at the minimum, if we got those put in, that's definitely gonna help, and that's where.
That would define the opposite hand of the channels.
Yes. So there's, um, ten.
Total.
Ten floating docks.
So there'd probably be like five, maybe?
Um, so the first five, if you were to listen to the plan, were in close help, I mean. Uh, the Crocker's Boilyard project and those longer fingers that we have proposed in terms of defining the channel to that area, keeping both of them swindled into.
This is the moorings, the current moorings, yes.
Let me just show you.
Okay, thank you.
So. This is just the fifty-foot fingers there.
Yep.
So we're saying we did like, at a minimum, yeah, at a minimum, that, that will help define where Crocker's and.
Yes.
Which is.
Those fifties, Manchester.
This is Crocker.
That's Crocker.
And that's the terminal, yeah, and these are the three fifty-foot fingers.
Okay.
And that's where a lot of the concern was with the fifty-foot line. So if we get those five in, that will set. You know, then they won't feel like they have to do the whole thing if they're not ready to do it.
Right. We have Byon, if that makes sense.
Fine, yeah, they wanted to, um, kind of the first five moorings heading west.
Yes.
Find any issues or comments?
I do not. Uh, I think that's fine. That's a fine start.
Just on that. Any, any other comments?
So, yeah, the question is, are you not intending to do the other four, um, floating docks?
Well, they are, but you're gonna be conditioning the special permit. On those, so they weren't necessarily ready to go ahead with all of them right now, but they're willing to.
Oh, so you're saying limit the, the floating dock. Uh, the conversion from the mooring, from the free, whatever it's called, free swinging mooring to floating docks. To those four floating docks that are five, that are directly opposite Crockers.
Crockers in the five, in the fifty-foot long.
Yeah, and then the others are.
I mean, they hope to help.
I guess, I mean, I think it's the same issue for the others. They swing into the channel, and you've got a real pinch point there as you approach the railroad. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, part of the, the second five moorings and, um, you know, I'm, I'm in on this was. He had suggested that those second five might have a little delay anyway, as he, as we kind of. Sort out how that's all gonna work with the rest of the harbor.
What if we said the condition would be that the, all the, uh, Manchester Marines' moorings would be converted to, um, floating docks by the summer. Of twenty twenty-four or something that was time limited.
Or acceptable to buy on.
They, they may be, they may not be able to put in this last one. Or maybe the last two.
Well, less, less worried.
Yeah, they're less worried about those than, than the ones right across from the facility, right?
And across from the ga- the gas dock, I mean, that.
The gas docks, yeah, I know.
It just.
I know, but. Put in three of those, second set of five.
And those boats swing on the channel. It's like a.
Eventually, it's just a matter of time.
You know, a low tide on a wind, those boats on those moorings was swinging into the channel, and that. The whole point, argument here has been that the channel's gonna be defined.
And safer.
And safer, so.
Gonna collaborate with Byon.
Yeah, obviously, in collaboration with, with the harbor master, that the. How many is the total?
There's ten total.
The ten total moors be converted to floating docks on a timeframe and, uh. Acceptable to the harbor master.
Yep, that's good.
Okay. In coordination, acceptable to the harbor master, yeah, that makes sense. Because I think the argument here has been that that's the, that's a safety.
Is that working for Byam?
Yes.
Uh, so, uh, it. It does work for me, uh, you know, ultimately, um, we're looking to get them all converted. I think we're all on the same page there.
Okay.
And.
So it's ten moorings that get converted to floating docks under your purview?
So I think it's ten, ten.
Ten, that's what I said.
Ten floating docks will be installed. Ten floating docks will be installed. Yeah, ten floating docks. Well, you're converting ten, are you converting ten moorings to, to twenty boats?
Yeah.
It's twenty boats, ten floating docks. Is that correct?
Don't say the boats.
Just ten floating docks. No boats, never mind.
So we have that condition, and then I believe we're passing on the other conditions we voted previous for Crockers.
Well, just the part, not the lobster boat.
Yeah, not the icebreaker, let the harbor, uh. Sarah has another question.
I have another question. Um, at the Harbor Advisory Committee meeting, um, you said that. In your case, that the, um, dock expansion, the additional dock, it should be largely for operational docks, not for. Um. Not for. You know, uh. Permanent slips, slips, or.
I'd say about half. Half of our project is for, to increase our operational capabilities, not to rent more space to, to, um.
Okay. So your financial analysis, did that reflect a, all the docks are occupied by, um. Harbor, uh, whatever, you know, um, slip, rental, slip rentals, or did it reflect that only half of them were?
It reflected that half of them were.
Great.
Any other comments?
Just wanna make sure the applicant is under, aware that the condition in the Manchester Marine permits, maybe I should, we should read them to them. Uh, Manchester Marine Corporation will continue operative fueling dock and pump-out station in accordance with acceptable state and federal laws. There will be no expansion of the channel, the proposed floating dock system. Continue the necessary funding, the design and fabrication of safety signs for paddle boards. Um, and then I think we're gonna add the same condition as prior in terms of no expansion. Um, unless there's a harbor master plan or three years, whichever is more, is sooner. And parking on site.
Comment on the, um, no expansion into the channel. Can, can that just be reworded a little bit to say that? Um, no vessels will intrude on the. Proposed seventy-foot wide channel shown on the plans. I think that's your intent, right? Because it really isn't, I mean, that could be read and interpreted in different ways.
So the recommendation, um, is that we change number five, there'll be no expansion into the channel of the proposed floating dock system.
Uh, this proposed seventy-foot wide channel shown on the plans.
So to, to, there'd be no intrusion, um, by docked vessels into the channel.
Yeah, into the channel shown on the plans. Thank you.
Yeah, I had that concern, too.
Betsy, you have that change.
Um, do you wanna repeat it again?
So change number five to there shall be no, um.
Intrusion.
Vessel, there's, vessels shall not, uh, be docked so as to impede the channel, or something like that.
Seventy-foot wide channel.
Yeah.
Yes, that's not, that's not what my intent was. My intent is that what's proposed is what's going to be built, and nothing else is going to be expanded.
Right, I think we're gonna add the same, Christina, this is a separate, um.
Okay, 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 thank you.
We are gonna add, I think, um, we proposed adding the same condition as we did to Crockers regarding the harbor master plan and a. Three-year, uh, expiration of that condition.
And that, that condition that you just mentioned, that we were just talking about before. That's on Crocker's, too, so the same language could be used, but, yeah.
Okay, Betsy, same language on both applications on the condition that Sarah just.
So no vessel shall impede into the seventy-foot wide channel.
Pardon? On the Crockers. I think that's not the Crockers. We can add that. Are we suggesting to add it to both?
If it's not on Crockers, then, uh.
I think we just have a good, right? We're just talking about Manchester right now.
Okay.
All right, so, um. Any other conditions, any other comments? Ready to vote? This. Application.
So what I would advise is to close the public hearing first, and then make a motion to move forward on the decision.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to, uh, close, been made and seconded. Any comment, uh, discussion? Roll call, uh, chair votes yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Close the public hearing, uh, like to take a motion to vote the decision as amended tonight.
So moved.
Any further discussion? Roll call, uh, chair votes yes, Christina?
Yes.
Uh, Laura?
Yes.
This?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, um, we have a preliminary, uh, traffic study report. Um, by M A P C. And Addie, no sure. Um, I've given you control of the, um. Co-host, so you can raise your hands up. This is a initial, um. Results of a study that they performed, and I believe, um. Will, uh, you know, review the presentation, ask some questions, and I believe you guys will be back in February to continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, I'm trying to share my slides right now, but I don't think I've been made a co-host yet. Okay, let me try that again. Can folks see that okay?
Yeah, sorry, I forgot.
All right, well, um, thank you to the the planning board for having me, uh. I was, I appreciate the opportunity to kick off this project with a presentation to you all in March, so I imagine many of you. Were there then and I'm excited to be back. Uh, my name is Addie Notcher, I'm a senior transportation planner. With the Metropolitan Area Planning Council or M A P C, we are the regional planning agency for greater Boston. A hundred and one cities and towns from the North Shore down to the South Shore and out to Metro West. Um, we've worked with the town of Manchester by the Sea on a number of projects over the years, including some. Economic development work, I think four or five years ago, that was before I was with the agency. But I know on parking has been a hot button topic throughout a number of those conversations and actually. I believe in that economic development work, one of the recommendations was to do um a downtown parking study, so appreciate the opportunity to. Come back and build up of that work and to uh. Share about the downtown parking study with you, we've been working hard on this um over the past year, and like I said, I presented. On this back in March and we've made some significant progress since then, so I'm uh eager to share with you a little bit about. What we've done and where we're headed. So just to quickly recap the goals of the parking study, we're on a basic level to provide information about the existing. Parking usage in downtown Manchester by the Sea, what's the existing? Uh, parking capacity, what's the occupancy, what's the duration? You know, how much of the parking is being utilized and how long are people parking for? So we want to give you all some good um data to work with. And then um based on that data, we want to provide policy and land use recommendations that can enable you all to manage. Your existing parking supply more effectively. And towards the end of this presentation, I'll get into some preliminary recommendations that we're thinking about based upon our data and analysis so far. And then the last goal that we've laid out in the scope of work was to inform. How you might think about new zoning in light of the new MBTA multifamily zoning requirement, so if there is potentially going to be new. Uh, residential development or multifamily development in and around the downtown, how might that um impact the parking situation in and around the downtown? Uh, can the existing parking capacity uh absorb that or might additional measures be be necessary and how does that again impact? Policy and land use within town? So these are some of the parking study goals that I laid out back in March and just wanted to recap for all of you quickly here. Uh, so this is just a look at our downtown study area, if you can follow my cursor here, we surveyed a number of on-street parking locations along. Route one twenty seven and then going down Beach Street. Uh, to um towards Singing Beach and up Summer Street as well, so those were the on-street. Uh, public parking locations that we surveyed, about a hundred and twenty-five on-street parking spaces, uh, most of those being. Two-hour parking spaces. We also looked at a number of off-street parking lots um at Town Hall, Masconomo Park. Uh, Harbors Point Forty Beach Street condo association, where you also have the MBTA commuter parking. And Norwood at Norwood Ave and North Street, so you can see those off-street parking lots. Um, outlined in gray, so that was um the focus of our parking study effort. And then just a little bit more about that, I mentioned a hundred and twenty-five on-street parking spaces, and this is the breakdown. Of the off-street public um parking spaces, Town Hall, Norwood Ave and Masconomo Park, mostly public parking. Harbors Point Forty Beach Street, mostly on private parking. Uh, with for a total of um four hundred and eighty-four parking spaces across all of those locations. And then we also got some additional data on the Singing Beach parking lot, which has about a hundred and twenty-four spaces. And that data was provided to us by town recreation staff and Cheryl Marshall and her team. Uh, provide us with some seasonal data there, but um myself and Sue Brown and a number of volunteers surveyed the other locations I mentioned. So a little bit more about the process, there was a strong interest in doing data collection on both a spring weekday. As well as a summer weekend to really understand how the parking uh at Singing Beach impacts the parking downtown. So we did data collection from eight AM to eight PM on Tuesday, May twenty-fifth. And eight AM to ten PM on Saturday, July sixteenth, slightly extended data collection to account for some of the. Summer uh usage patterns. We had a very robust group of um study volunteers, um, some of you might be joining this meeting tonight. Who walked predetermined routes every hour on the hour to collect the occupancy data, so literally to determine. How many parking spaces were being occupied each hour on the hour using a. Pretty intensive data sheets, which I'll show you an example of on the next slide. We also collected on partial license plate data. For the vehicles that were parked on-street because we want to get a sense of how long are these vehicles actually parking for, so in addition to the capacity. We want to get a sense of the duration as well. Uh, we unfortunately weren't able to capture duration data. For the off-street parking lots, we just counted the numbers of cars that were parked in. Different areas of those parking lots, actually doing the license plate data for the off-street parking lots, unfortunately, that was beyond. The the scope of what we're able to do for this data collection, but we did get robust duration data for the on-street parking. And then um town recreation staff provided us with um parking data for the Singing Beach parking lot. On Sunday, the seventeenth of July, which was a day after we had gone and done the on-street and parking lot data collection. But we were assured by Cheryl and her team that the Sunday data was comparable to what uh the. Data would have been for that Saturday, so that gives us a rough analog to look at and look at the total parking picture. So this is just a quick sample of what a data collection sheet looked like for the on-street spaces, we have had every individual spot. Uh, delineated and we wrote down the partial license plate info um to get a sense of whether those spots were occupied, we left it. Blank or with a dashed line if it wasn't occupied, if it was occupied by the same car, hour after hour, we put arrows up to indicate that. So this is just a brief snapshot into how we gathered the data for the on-street parking occupancy and duration. And so starting to get into some of our results, we made occupancy maps for both um of the data collection days we did for each hour, so this is. A sample map that shows the peak parking occupancy for Tuesday, May twenty-fifth. And you can see that overall parking occupancy for the entire study area we looked at was fifty percent. But you can see how the um occupancy varies by location as well. Uh, you know, the higher occupancy in red and sort of mid-tier occupancy in the orange and yellow. And lower occupancy in green, and we have maps like this for every hour. Uh, for May for May twenty-fifth, but this was just a wanted to share this as an illustrative. Example from a peak, the peak parking occupancy for the entire day. And similarly, for July sixteenth, uh, we found a peak occupancy of seventy-one percent, again, that was at. One PM and you can see a higher utilization at this um at this time and on this date. Um, largely folks are parking for to go to Singing Beach uh by and large, so you can see that. Um, a beach weekend does significantly increase the parking occupancy pattern in downtown Manchester by the Sea. And then this chart um is going back to May twenty-fifth, showing the hourly occupancy variations. Across the entire day, starting at eight AM and continuing till eight. PM when we gather data, so you can see um about thirty percent occupancy to start at eight PM, gradually rising. To that peak of just of fifty percent at one PM, and then you get a gradual decrease again throughout the day, so these are hour over hour variations. Similarly, for July sixteenth, again, at around eight AM, starting at thirty percent. Rising throughout the morning and early afternoon to that peak of seventy-one percent. Uh, just around one PM, and then you see the decline throughout the day. Back to about fifty percent by five PM and back down to thirty percent uh by nine PM or for ten PM. So you see a higher occupancy um during uh the beach weekend tapping out at about maxing out at about seventy percent, seventy-one percent. A couple more maps for you here, so this is um average hourly occupancy for May twenty-fifth, um, so this is taking all twelve hours and just taking. The average, so you see, we got an average occupancy of thirty-nine percent. For the entire day on May twenty-fifth, and again, you can see there are some slight fluctuations in terms of which areas have higher or lower occupancy. Similarly, for July sixteenth, uh, we have a peak uh an average hourly occupancy of fifty-three percent. Again, no surprise that that's a little bit higher than thirty-nine percent, given the higher usage for. Singing Beach and and other weekend activities potentially, and again, some uh local localized variations as well. But um so slightly higher occupancy, but still a lot of capacity for additional parking. Getting into some of the uh duration data here, uh, you can see the average duration data for the on-street parking. For May twenty-fifth here, um, most of the on-street parking is two-hour parking and by and large, people are. Adhering to those posted parking limits, except for this little area up on, I believe that's. I believe that's Union Streets, Route one twenty-seven, where we have people parking for a bit longer than the the posted limit, and I think over here on this segment. Of Route one twenty-seven as well, right outside that multifamily building there. Um, and we did, we did observe people who were parking for um longer than uh two hours, so you know, some there were. A handful of folks were parking for four or five hours or even longer, so we do have some of those individual data points. Uh, presumably, some of those folks might be um employees at some of the small businesses who might be parking longer term. We also did observe a handful of instances where people might have parked in one spot for a couple of hours and then they just moved up the block for another. Couple hours, so probably to avoid the two-hour time limit, so again, these might be folks who. Work in some of the small businesses are just moving their car um to avoid getting a parking ticket perhaps. Again, here's the average duration for July sixteenth, even with the increased utilization I mentioned earlier for Singing Beach. You still see that folks are adhering to those posted time limits for the most part, again. With that area of Union Street kind of being an outlier there, but I think speaks to um the power of the seasonal enforcement that's happening that people know to. Expect tickets or violations if they do park beyond those posted parking limits, so by and large, again, you're seeing here. That even on a busy summer beach day, uh, on a weekend, that folks are adhering to those posted, uh, those posted time restrictions. So this helps us pivot to some of our key findings, I really want to point to this top takeaway over here. That um parking occupancy is consistently below an eighty-five percent benchmark, which is commonly used for occupancy when it comes to downtown. Parking studies and analysis, um eighty-five percent really is sort of the sweet spot where um. Most spaces are occupied, but there's always a few spaces that are available. For um folks to find on-street parking if they need it, so the fact that occupancy. For the study area is consistently below eighty-five percent actually indicates that you do have an adequate parking supply. In downtown Manchester by the Sea, so I would say that is probably the biggest takeaway from uh this preliminary analysis here. With that said, um, there are some location-specific variations in the parking occupancy. And that creates potential for more targeted or localized parking management strategies as well, and I'll share a little bit more about that momentarily. Again, as I mentioned, while most people are adhering to the posted time limits, you do have some people parking on-street for extended. Durations, which might speak to how some of the employee parking programs might be used or not being used, again, I'll say a little bit more about that shortly. And another um uh key takeaway is that the off-street parking lots contain a broad and sometimes complicated and confusing variety. Of parking regulations, so that's another piece to keep in mind as we think about uh improving parking management in downtown Manchester by the Sea. So some of the preliminary recommendations that this helps point us towards, um, some of the suggestions would be to add. Pavement markings uh for to more clearly delineate some of the parking spaces along Route one twenty-seven. Um, as it stands on Beach Street and other parts of the downtown, they're very well-marked um parking spaces, so if the same could be done. On Route one twenty-seven, it could make a pretty big difference in terms of folks knowing precisely where to park. And really clarified the number of parking spaces that that are available. Similarly, on the eastern end of Summer Street, where um. The road kind of goes uphill and takes a curve to the left, that's another area that could benefit from. Increased delineation of parking spaces and perhaps some improved signage as well. This was an area where you have a posted two-hour parking restriction, but most people um. By and large, don't really park there, um, in our data and our analysis, we found that this was an area. Where parking was on-street parking was consistently underutilized, perhaps because. It might be a little bit farther away from some of the small businesses, there might not be. As much activity in the immediate vicinity, but is still very much legitimate public parking that people could utilize on-street, so. Increasing the visibility of some of those parking spaces on the farther reach of Summer Street in particular. Is another preliminary recommendation at this point um in our analysis. Um, we'd also want to think of opportunities to enhance assess and enhance signage on-street for the parking throughout the downtown. Um, as I mentioned, Union Street, where people are parking for longer than two hours on average, maybe there could be opportunities to increase enforcement. Whether it's on a seasonal basis or potentially longer term as well. We also know that the connections between some of the on-street or the off-street parking lots. Um, and the broader town downtown might be lacking at times, so to increase utilization of these lots, can you enhance uh wayfinding? Can you enhance pedestrian connections? And I know there's strong interest in this in particular. Uh, when we talk about how do folks move between the Town Hall, Hall, Hall parking lot. And Beach Street as well, so thinking about how we improve those connections, make them more visible, make them more. Attractive, so people can get back and forth between different parking areas and the broader downtown is going to be really important. A few more recommendations, as um I mentioned, uh, the the off-street parking lots have a pretty broad and um and oftentimes complicated. Uh, set of parking regulations, so think of thinking about opportunities to simplify or adjust those. Regulations to um meet uh what the actual needs are and to enhance or. Alter the signage if necessary, I think that's something that we've we heard throughout the study that. The signage is is lacking in some of these off-street parking lots, so how can you make it very clear um who's supposed to park where and and when? So as part of that, you would want to certainly think of opportunities to assess the utilization of the existing business parking program with placards. Um, could there be opportunities to allocate or lease additional spaces in the off-street parking lots? For some of that longer-term employee parking, so that can free up some of the on-street spaces for folks who are visiting the downtown and might have other needs there. So um, so that's one piece uh that could be reassessed and looked at. And then as there might be opportunities for more residential development, could there be a specific parking program for downtown residents who might inhabit? New multifamily developments in and around the downtown and can um spaces again be allocated or leased in some of those off-street parking lots? And then one final element as as part of that, if there is going to be increased utilization of parking downtown, if there are going to be more residents living or working in the downtown. Can there be opportunities for shared parking agreements with some of these local institutions or businesses that have. Large amounts of parking, but they might not be utilizing it throughout the day, say, at the American Legion or the First Paris Church. San Tender Bank, some of these different uh locations in and around the downtown, where maybe some of these spaces could be put to longer-term use. So um some of the next steps, um, we're going to develop a final parking study report um in the in the early new year, so that will go. Much more in-depth on all the data and recommendations I just shared. Um, and that final report will also include an addendum that. Gets into more detail about what these potential parking impacts could be of the increased residential development downtown, so I'll be. Modeling a few scenarios that go into some more detail. And I'm excited to have the opportunity to field some questions and comments from you all tonight, but there's my email contact if you want to reach me. Beyond tonight, and I'll look forward to coming back to this board again in February when we have the final report for to share with all of you. So again, I I want to appreciate and thank you again for your time and I'll take some questions, so I'll just um stop the screenshot for now, but I can bring it. Back up if folks want to reference any of those slides again, and I believe you you have it for reference in your packets as well.
Okay, thank you, Addie, um. Any questions or comments from the board? Christina?
Yeah, I have quite a few, actually, um, thanks, Addie, um, I think I've asked once Sue left um for. The data, I've done a few interviews, I don't see any of the interviews mentioned in this, I thought we were supposed to be delineating like. What businesses were using some of these spots where they shouldn't shouldn't be parking, so I guess where's that information? Um, the day in July was less than optimal, I think we were aiming for a really sunny day in July and that day wasn't, so was there any kind of? Modeling that you can do that predict if more people would have come to the beach that day, because my recollection, it was pretty drizzly in the morning. May have cleared up in the afternoon, but that was not the, you know. Eighty-five, ninety-degree perfect beach day that I think we were looking to do this data collection. Um, I guess high level, I I don't know where some confusion might be, but the planning board is the board that should be doing studies and is responsible for studies. And. Like, one of the. Responsibilities was to come to the boards and talk to the boards about where you thought we thought. Parking issues were, but. We weren't contacted, right? I don't know what board you went to, but. We weren't asked where we thought as the planning board where the concerns were. Um, I think early on, we laid out, you know, how many cars, like some of this basic data. Collection, like how many cars are registered in Manchester, so. Um. Some of these concerns, I just not sure if they've been addressed here, and my. final one was, you are communicating with another group of residents, citizen volunteers, which isn't the planning board, like in advance of the planning board. I guess I just want to reiterate, we are the board that's in charge of study. So um, concerns that this information isn't getting passed through to the plan, planning board. I mean, this was notified on several days. It took several questions to get this information. I still don't have some of the data. Um, and uh, like I would like you to also address a, another study that, or survey that the downtown improvement is doing and how that is correlating with this. So there's a lot of there. I'm sorry.
Sure, I'm, I'll, I'll try and address as much of that as I can, and I might defer to um, the chair or Betsy or um, I, I see Cheryl is here on some of those other points that you raised. As to your, your first point about um, the data, I can take a, a look back and see what we are able to share. I'm not sure to what extent we've shared raw data from past parking studies we've done in, in other municipalities, but if that would be of interest, I can figure out, I could potentially figure out a way for us to do that. Um, I'm, I'm trying to remember all the different points you brought up with respect to um, communicating with the, the planning board. You guys primarily working with Sue Brown on this earlier, as, as folks might know, and I know there's been a lot of uh, transition recently. So you know, I, uh, so that's been a little challenging to navigate. So I, I'm, you know, just trying to pick that up here as, as best as I can now. Um, as far as the beach uh, parking day goes, um, you know, we did the study area data collection on a Saturday. Um, and I, I'm trying to remember what the weather was like that day. Maybe that was the day that was a little drizzly. The parking data that was provided to us um, by Cheryl was for the following Sunday uh, the day after, and I think that might have been a hotter or more sunnier day, but Cheryl did um, and communicate to me that that data was um, you're reflective of what uh, you know, a well-utilized summer beach day would be.
The second day, we were thinking a spring day and comparing it to a summer sunny day, like the, but the day that we collected the second was not a sunny day. Like, that's my point. So is there some kind of modeling that you can do like X percentage better if the weather, because that was definitely not an optimal day, weekend day for a draw in Manchester. It was drizzly, right? That's my question. How can your data that you collected that day be modeled to a sunny day? Because that wasn't, and that's what we were under the expectation of.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if that's something we can do, to be honest. Uh, most municipal parking studies we do, we, we typically do one day of data collection. We did two days of data collection in this instance because we heard um, from folks that we wanted uh, to also get a understanding of the beach traffic on, on a summer weekend. And so um, you know, we, we, we did that to the best that we could. Um, you know, some, I know these things, the weather is, is unpredictable, but it was a pretty involved effort. Um, so I don't know that we could, you know, project modeling-wise for the weather, uh, because that's, you know, something we've never done before in terms of you know, doing parking data collection on a weekend because folks are, are going to the beach. So this is a little bit of a special case for us and I, you know, I think we tried to do the best we could, um, given the circumstances.
Comments from the board, Laura?
Uh, I have a couple of questions. Thanks, Addie, for the presentation. I was one of the planning board members, have to um, uh, be a volunteer. So I volunteered on that July sixteenth, Saturday. From, I think, one in the afternoon till nine PM that night through that eight o'clock hour. Um, it did not rain. It was not, it was not um, the hottest, sunniest day of the afternoon during the time I was there. It didn't rain. It was a little cooler than a sort of you know, spectacular beach day. And then I don't remember what the weather was on Sunday when Cheryl provided the um, information for the traffic uh, at the beach. I wanted to ask Addie um, a couple of questions. One is, I remember that we were surveying handicapped ADA accessible spaces, and I wondered if you had any conclusion about um, those in terms of their um, uh, location and uh, use and um, whether the uh, you know, kind of as a percentage of uh, spaces, it's um, typical to what you might see. And then also you made a comment that a lot of the highly utilized spaces were, um, it was assumed that those were for people going to the beach. I often wondered about that because the spaces on Beach Street, and they used to go farther towards the beach until the town pulled it back a few years ago, but they're all two-hour spaces. And um, it's not a real long time by the time you walk down to the beach and from wherever you're parked, and then you got to get back in time to move your car before two hours. So I'm wondering if you had a kind of a location limit, half-mile, or if you had some kind of radius by what you decided might be beach parking versus uh, just some other visitor to the town, given that we, we didn't really know, you know, what people were parked there for. Is there, is there a radius that you're considering there?
Yeah, that, that, that's a good question. To your first question about the um, the ADA spaces, I haven't um, drawn any conclusions or taken a close look at the data for those just yet, but certainly can do that as part of the final um, parking study report and definitely want to think about the location of handicap spaces. Are there sufficient handicap spaces? So if that's um, of interest, we can definitely uh, share, share a bit more about that in the report. Um, and to your point about the uh, the beach parking, that, that is an interesting point that you know, if people are sort of sticking to this two-hour parking limit, are they really walking to the beach and then coming back in a pretty constrained window? So, you know, it's impossible to say for for sure that folks are, are using the, you know, parking on Beach Street and then walking to the beach and coming back within two hours. It seemed to be uh, a reasonable assumption, but maybe there are some things that we need to check about that. But I think we can say with um, confidence that there are more people, you know, parking in and around the downtown on a summer weekend as opposed to a spring week.
I wonder, yeah, I wonder just as a point of clarification, when the report comes out, if it's useful to draw, you know, half-mile radius from Singing Beach to which parking space is followed in there, because some of the spaces you were showing on say, Summer Street or, you know, more central to town, but farther to the beach. It's hard for me to imagine that some of those spaces that are farther from the beach are really going to be practical for people trying to walk down the beach, get back in two hours. Um, so it just might be interesting to do some kind of radius to see what kinds of destinations we think like people might be headed for.
Yeah, we, we can figure out a way to frame that in, in the report and, you know, sort of, you know, surveying people and where they were going. We might just need to um, make some educated guesses here or, or, you know, point that maybe some further analysis would be needed. Uh, but that reminds me of, you know, one of uh, Christine's earlier question about the the downtown survey that was done. You know, I, I'm aware of that effort, that presentation has, has been shared with me from the, the interviews and surveys that were done. And so, you know, I didn't speak to that today because I want to focus on the M A P C um, data collection effort, which, which some of you were involved with. But um, when it comes to the final report, you know, I definitely plan to reference that body of work as well. And so, you know, how exactly I'll do that um, is still to be determined, but I, I will certainly reference the Downtown Improvement Committee and the work that's been done.
There, Chris.
So, yeah, I have a couple of things, Addie. It, it seems like there's a funny disconnect between people's perception of parking versus the data, the actual data. And I guess that's understandable because you remember when you can't find a parking space and that sticks in your mind, whereas the days that you can, that's just another day that you go back. So the, you know, I think those summer weekend days are what people have in mind when they talk about shortages of parking. But I still think it's interesting that um, in general, eighty-five percent is uh, acceptable for a downtown, or maybe optimal. And the, the biggest uh, percentage of parking actually occupies just seventy percent. Uh, even if it were a drizzly day in the summer, that's still kind of surprising to me, but you know, it's something we should keep in mind. The other thing is that I know there is a, there is a problem with people who live in apartments in the downtown without parking off-site, I mean, I'm sorry, without parking onsite, and they're using whatever spaces they can find to park. And I think that is something that's uh, a definite concern. But I see Steve Carhart's um, probably going to speak on this also, of the downtown uh, improvement uh, program group. And so maybe I should let him talk about that a little bit. Uh, but I'm wondering, I guess going back to the perception, I'm wondering if there are things that you could recommend in the report that might help change people's perception somehow.
Sure, and I, and to your point about the, the perception versus the, the data, you know, I think you know, Manchester certainly isn't unique in, in this regard. And, you know, lots of cities and towns that M A P C has worked with over the years. You know, we constantly hear from folks that they think there's a parking shortage, and then we go out and gather the data and it turns out that they're below that, that eighty-five percent threshold. Um, and I think it's oftentimes the difference between, you know, parking right outside the establishment, you might want to patronize or work that you might work at versus maybe a block or two away. And I would note that even in, you know, the downtown improvement committee survey that was done, I believe the businesses defined parking um, nearby as parking literally right outside their business. So I think that's part of the perception gap that we have to navigate, that people are oftentimes used to finding parking that's nearby and, and convenient, you know, right outside their, their old final destination, whereas your parking spaces might be available if they circle the block or, you know, maybe park a, a block or way. So that's um, certainly speaks to the perception issue. Um, with respect to how we kind of communicate that at a higher level and what sort of recommendations we might make, you know, certainly um, improving signage in and around the downtown to the different parking areas could help with that. You know, we can consider whether some sort of map or, you know, a physical printed resource or online map could be made available and distributed and that the businesses have that available as well. So that helps educate people a bit more about what their parking options are. So certainly happy to um, you know, add that to the list of recommendations if it would be of interest. And then um, to your point about uh, downtown residents, folks living in existing multifamily housing who don't have places to park, or they might use um, some of the town hall lots or on-street, you know, that speaks to one of the potential recommendations of, you know, maybe some sort of parking, permit parking programs specifically for downtown residents, or those folks who are living downtown could be created and spaces could be set aside in some of the off-street parking house lots, whether at Town Hall or elsewhere. So you're definitely interested in visiting and visiting that in more detail.
So I wonder how shopping malls get away with having people walk, you know, three or four times as far as they do in downtown Manchester, and no one complains at all when you're shopping.
Good shopping. Steve, I see you have a hand up. Let me just get through the board's comments first. Um, Sarah, anything?
Um, I thought your, your findings were actually not surprising, which I think is good. Um, I did look and July sixteenth was sixty-eight to eighty-one and partly sunny. So um, my thought as we think about the synthesizing the results is, okay, so maybe if we bumped the July sixteenth data up by a, a weather factor of X percent. And even if you got to a hundred percent on those mid, midday hours, how does that change the recommendation? You don't have to answer that right now, but just think a little bit about, you know, a few days a year, if we are at above the eighty-five percent, how does that change your recommendations? And then what are the recommendations for the various audiences? Because I do think, and maybe it's a maybe I'll do, do that in the abstract, not knowing who was parking in those spaces, but still we know that there's residents who don't have a dedicated space. There's merchant, there's employees who are there for many hours. And then I think um, one of the perceived problems about no parking is that the type of uh, shopping establishment we, we have are, oh, I'll go in there if there's a space right in front of it. They tend to be the kind of place where you drop in maybe frequently to see what it, they have or get a quick birthday card or that kind of thing, rather than a place where you spend a lot of time, the restaurants aside. Um, and maybe restaurants is a different audience. And maybe you don't know what, who was parking there, but I think that the kinds of um, need, uh, and I put that in quote, uh, or perceived need um, might drive different recommendations. And then lastly, um, I think that your recommendations make sense, um, at least in terms of striping and that kind of thing. And those probably belong with the D P W and the police or the select board or something like that. But I thought, interesting.
Thank you. And I think um, to your point about the, the different audiences and, you know, what are the different uses of, of parking? You know, certainly the, the residents, um, certainly the businesses and, and the employees. And that's where I had a couple of those recommendations to think about what some of those um, permit parking programs might look like. You know, we talked about folks who might be visiting the beach, but there's sort of that reasonable question about what, are they actually using the on-street parking or not? Versus are these folks more generalized visitors to the downtown? So I think, you know, we can certainly talk about, um, in the final report, you know, who those users are and make some educated assumptions about, you know, how they're using some of those parking spaces and what sort of recommendations would um, suit their needs and interests.
Thank you. Um, just my comment, um, we may be changing the density in the downtown in the future. Next, on this M B T A community uh, Edith, I'm wondering if there's any way to model um, what that might do potentially to uh, parking, depending on what gets um, what kind of density changes we, we make?
Yes, absolutely. So that's, that was part of the, the scope of work for this project. And um, and I mentioned in the presentation that part of what we want to do with this um, study, which we actually, which we haven't done in with past municipal parking studies, but we're doing it here because we heard from you all that this was important to you. Was thinking about what would the impacts on the parking supply be if there were to be increased multifamily development downtown? So we will be modeling some scenarios that speak to that. Um, and so that will be included in the, the final report that we'll share um, early in the new year.
And could you also, is it possible to get data from Cheryl on, you know, how many times uh, the the beach parking lot is filled up and how, how long it was filled up for um, I don't know, over the past year or two? Is that data available? Do you know, or um?
We do keep track of that. We do keep track of when the parking lot fills. Um, and in this study, both the Saturday and Sunday, the weather was about the same. It was a gray day. It was above average. Um, as for people visiting the beach. So I thought actually that was a great day to use as opposed to the five or six days that the parking lot fills. And then people perceive that as every day, when it's actually only about a half a dozen times a summer when the lot is full.
And when it's full, Cheryl, is it, you know, for hours and uh, you know?
Not, not usually. Um, usually once it fills, it's, you know, uh, late morning and then it usually starts to turn over almost immediately after that. There's a lot of in and out.
Okay, just wondering if we could maybe get that into the report somehow.
But you, of um, just of how many days it did fill? Is that the information? Okay, yeah, easy. Yeah, I'll talk to Addie about that.
And, and so that, to your point, Mr. Chair, about um, wanting, you know, thinking about increasing density um, in, in and around the downtown. If there are, you know, specifics proposals that you all might be thinking about that you're willing to share or, or ideas, I would encourage you to, to share those with me so I can pass those along to our data services team so they can think about how that impacts.
Immediate. I think it's, we're a little, we're a little further down the line with that, but certainly will. We have something. Okay, uh, let's talk to Steve Carhart on the downtown improvement.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for those of you who may not be aware of our group, we are a town committee appointed by the select board. Uh, we can, uh, we consist of seven volunteers. And uh, we see our principal role as being trying to provide as much connective tissue as possible between the merchants, restaurants, institutions and residents of our downtown and our hard-working, elected and employed municipal uh, leadership. Um, in connection with this effort, uh, we were engaged very closely with Addie and with uh, Sue Brown. And our particular contribution was to conduct a survey of residents, institutions and, and merchants in downtown as to their views on parking. Uh, we also did some car counting and other uh, odd uh, volunteer works to try to help this overall project. I would like to call, I am, I'm joined by my colleagues, Marlene Dolan and Linda Crosby, who worked very hard on uh, the survey of citizen uh, opinion on parking. And I'd like to turn it over to Marlene, uh, who designed the survey uh, for her uh, report, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Um, sure, Marlene, um, you're brief.
Thank you. I'll be brief. We sent a survey to one hundred and eighteen downtown residents, businesses, including the library, the the church, the town hall and restaurants, and we received a thirty-one percent response rate. And what I wanted to say is that we have facts and data from both all of those residents in addition to additional work that Sue Brown and I believe Christina has done with interviews directly. Our goal was to find out what directly our our downtown businesses needed and need and want for parking so that they can have a vibrant business. In that regard, I will say that although we have an overall parking supply that looks adequate, most of our, most of our businesses are asking for parking that is closely located to their front door. And we have a problem in our back town hall lot with people that live downtown and need to find parking for their houses where they have no parking. So there's, there's, although, so what I'm trying to say is although there is a large parking availability in downtown, we are in a we have a cathany of problems with parking for the people that reside in downtown, which is problematic for both our merchants and our downtown residents. Finally, my last point will be for those that are coming to visit our town and would like to have a parking spot to enjoy restaurants, shopping and going to the beach. They do not really have a lot of options because most of our residents are using the town hall lot. Eighty percent of them are using that lot for their own parking. And the two hour slots on the streets are usually taken mostly by people that are working in the businesses that are on the street. So I think there's finer detail in this parking study that needs to be pulled out so that we can really understand the finite details of what's going on in our town with parking.
Yeah, I think that that's absolutely right, Marlene, and nice, nice to see you here. I think you know, that's exactly what we'll get into in the for the purposes of the final report, which will go much more in depth, I think, for the purposes of the conversation today. I want to keep it pretty high level and somewhat general and give you a sense of the direction we could go with this by agree that, you know, a lot more specificity is needed for this to be useful to all of you. And so that's what will be forthcoming in the next couple of months. So appreciate you raising those points and stay tuned for more.
Great. And Addie, I just wanted to ask one quick question. Why did you eliminate the Beach Street span between, you know, the Callas and the Mari's and so forth? Why was that off from your study? You didn't locate that in your study?
Is this, I'm trying to think which segment that is offhand. Is that after you get past Masconomo Park going?
It's when you take a hard right to go down Beach Street. That's like, that is like the main concern part of parking for all of the residents that responded to our survey. I was just wondering about that. It's like when you pump down one twenty-seven before you get up Union Street, which, by the way, to all those on the phone, Union Street is a big problem for the residents.
Oh, we did look at Beach Street in its in its entirety for that segment. So maybe what you might be seeing where it might look like there are gaps, are areas where parking might have been restricted, but we did survey all of the on-street parking spaces on Beach Street.
Thank you.
I just, I just want to acknowledge Linda Crosby, who is, as was also worked very hard on the on the survey with Marlene, who's here tonight. Thank, so thank you very much. If anything further comes up, we're glad to answer any questions that might we might be able to contribute to. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Steve. Kathy Bellata.
Hi, just a quick point of information. I think the information in this parking study is really helpful and it's going to be even, you know, I'm sure the final report is going to be even more helpful. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. But when we, when the, it comes time for the final report to be published, I guess that's February. I'm not sure if Greg is still on the call, but I would like Greg and Betsy to review the content of the report and determine which sections should be presented at a select board meeting. Some of what we've talked about tonight, you know, regulations on how different parking lots are used. I think some of that is the purview of the select board. And we would be the ones making decisions on any potential changes or recommendations. So I just want to make sure, this is part of the governance work that we're doing to improve the communication amongst the boards. And so I just think it's helpful before the final report is discussed at a meeting. You know, Betsy and Greg kind of work together to carve out clarity around which of the recommendations that may be in that report would be planning board purview versus select board versus somebody else. So just, just a thought to get, get all those roles and responsibilities discussed ahead of time. I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Christina?
Thank you. Actually, I think first I'm going to follow up to Kathy. You know, the planning boards has two roles, and one of those roles is to conduct studies and plans other resources and needs of the town. So as much as I appreciate Marlene and Linda and Steve doing that, I do think there is a disconnect. And hopefully, the Board of Selectmen with this government is where it can, you know, help reconnect people and boards when they embark on this, because I really do feel like the planning board and the downtown improvement should have been more partners on this. I don't feel like there was a lot of collaboration, and it is the planning board's job to do studies. So if you guys can forward that information, your data and the questions, I would love to see that. And I think the rest of the board would like to see it. I'm not sure if this was a one-off on this study. I'm really just still confused on how this downtown improvement started this, not here or there, but I do think we need more communication because ultimately, it's my opinion that this was a planning board responsibility to do studies and jobs, which if we were working collaboration with the downtown improvement, you guys could have been the arm of it, but I feel like the town, some of the boards are kind of off on their own without direction, and maybe that needs to come from the Board of Selectmen. But my final question is, Addie, you know, talking about where this parking can be with the M B T A transit. So that M B T transit is a half a mile, right? So there's this language that we can say in Manchester, we have the village, but now we're just talking about downtown parking. But when we talk about the village is where we're going to be talking about this M B T A over overlay district. So how are now we going to take what you have done and extrapolate that? I did want this to include the heater, which, you know, I got vetoed on this information, but there's much more area that will be impacted with this M B T A zoning. And you can already see it on School Street and Pleasant Street and, you know, the high school. So all of these areas are within that half mile that will have to be subject to the zoning. So I think this is a good step, but my concern from the beginning of this project was it's not addressing the half mile that we are going to need to undertake and look at the parking issues in the next year. Thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Christina. And to that point, I would say that if there's information that you all can give us about what some of those potential zoning districts might look like, you know, that will give our data services team the opportunity to dig in on those when it comes to modeling the type of scenario that I was talking about earlier, you know, we, I think we can make some educated guesses on on our end, but the more that you can sort of provide us with some of those parameters to to do that analysis, I think that would help us out. So if there are you know, specific geographies, or even, you know, if we could localize it on a census tract level, that can help us think about this, this model in a little bit more, more detail. So I appreciate the point because I understand that, you know, some of the more suitable multifamily, how multifamily housing sites in Manchester might not be right near the M B T A stop. They might be maybe a little adjacent or a little further out. So we want to make sure that we're reflecting that in our final analysis and scenario development.
Betsy?
Couple of comments. I was heavily involved in a traffic study in Winchester, Winchester Center, which has two train stations into Boston, a quarter of a mile from each other, as well as a significantly larger town center than Manchester. And what we found in the study was that merchants wanted to park in front of their stores. The employees wanted to park within a reasonable distance, and those were all parking spaces that should have been for patrons. And so what we did was we found remote parking spaces within a five to fifteen minute walk of the downtown. And we designated that those spaces for free. So if you were an employee of a business, you could park ten minutes away and walk, which is only a pain in in the rain, but you could park in a remote location. And you wouldn't have to move your car, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't get a ticket. You were designated for that spot, and it freed up a lot of parking spaces in the downtown. And it was a very successful result by doing that. So it's something that I will talk with Greg about to take a look at remote parking spaces, because I think that is one of the answers to the issue.
Thank you. Greg, we haven't heard from you.
Yeah, thanks, Ron. I just want to just underscore that that this, this study really is a multi-board and committee study. And that certainly having the planning board's input and guidance is critical. But we also have a number of other boards and committees that are engaged and are giving input. So I don't think we need to disparage the effort that it is going forward and that this is an opportunity for the board, for the planning board to give very substantial and important input. It's not, this is a status report. It's not the end report, as Addie has indicated. There's, you know, three more months of work. So if there are additional thoughts and additional recommendations that you feel need to be highlighted, this is the time to bring those forward. So, so don't be shy and and let, let your thoughts be known. And this can be a good report that we can all feel good about.
Thanks, Greg. Kathy Bellata?
Yeah, just, just to amplify exactly what Greg just said. It is a multi-board effort. My only point, and I agree with Christina, it's absolutely the planning board's responsibility to conduct studies. My concern is, is also what one of the ones that Christina mentioned, that sometimes our well-intentioned boards and committees, we can all do things a little out of sequence that can cause some inefficiencies when it's time to make decisions on recommendations. So Greg, I do think it would be valuable for you and Betsy to kind of think through, right? What is the sequence of presentations or joint meetings that need to be held when this final report is ready to come to light? Because if we do things in an, in an optimal sequence, we can get to decisions faster. And and that will ultimately be better for the town.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for taking my last point. I wanted to note that when we initiated this study, we did it in conversation with Sue Brown, who at the time was the head of the planning board. We offered to take the study off the table as a result of the fact that it got voted in, that Addie and the the study was going on. Sue encouraged and asked us to stay in because the Addie study was not going to talk to the downtown merchants. So I just wanted to let you know that the downtown improvement committee did not do this except in conversation with Sue as the head of the planning board at the time. So just, just so that's on the table with everyone.
Ron, we need to clarify that. I'm really sorry. And Marlene, this is not against you. It's just the governance that this town is a little dysfunctional. Sue Brown was and never has been the head of the planning board. The planning board is a group of seven elected officials. Sue was the town planner. So she's was not the head of the planning board. And that's where the concern is. I think just, you know, conversation with the planning board, this is what we think we're doing. Do you have any comments? Do you have any other questions on the input? Like, it never came in front of us. And we are the voted elected officials of the town. So that's where I'm seeing there's a bit of a disconnect, and I do want to applaud your work, but I haven't seen the questions or the survey. So I guess maybe still keeping us in the loop hasn't happened. So that's just my high level concern, and I'm asking the town select board Greg to maybe help close these loops and clarify what people's roles are here and responsibilities. That's it. Thank you, Marlene. I do appreciate your help and work.
Okay, thank you. Very helpful.
So I have a question. When we get to the recommendations part of the report, I'm interested in pros and cons of charging for any parking, both as a potential source of revenue and as a, you know, traffic demand and behavior management tool, you know, Betsy made the point about remote parking as being one possibility. And I don't know if there are, now that things are mostly app-based and you don't have to actually go and install, you know, parking meter posts everywhere, it seems like the technology has gotten simpler. On the other hand, I know somebody's still got to manage it. So are there kind of rules of thumb about what sides, you know, towns are that this makes sense for, or what kind of parking demand that you're trying to manage you, but it's not a conversation that we've had yet. And if we're talking about recommendations for how to manage both the perceived demand and the actual demand for spaces, it would be really, I'd be very interested to find out more about the potential for use of charging for parking through some app or some under measure like that.
Sure, I think there's a few different pieces to tease out there with respect to whether towns comparable to Manchester by the Sea have or haven't implemented parking meters or or charging for on-street parking. I don't know of examples offhand, but that's something that we we could look into a bit more if you are interested in kind of what other municipalities that might be comparable have or haven't done. I think at a high level, I would say, you know, the pros, certainly with when you put in parking meters, that would encourage more parking turnover if you, if you have a problem where people are parking for extended durations and you want to free up spots on a more regular basis. I think, you know, parking meters could certainly help with that, but I don't necessarily know that that's the challenge that you all are confronting in downtown Manchester right now. And then, of course, like, as you mentioned, you know, it could be a revenue stream for the town, and you could think about ways that that revenue could be reinvested in the downtown, if you want to think of a measure like a parking benefit district or something like that. So those, I would say, were some of the the pros. You know, the cons, of course, are you know, the cost and and management of that system would mean you need more parking enforcement in that sense, as I understand it right now. The enforcement is seasonal, it would be, so that would mean you need more dedicated parking enforcement capacity. And then, of course, there's the political side of the equation in terms of how residents and businesses might not often, might not always have the best response to parking meters. So then that's more of a political question. But I would say at a high level, those would be some of the considerations on both the pro and the con side, as well as what parking meters can help you accomplish in terms of goals of increasing turnover and things like that. So I hope that's helpful at a high level.
There's a table or something that can go into the report that sort of talks about the pros and cons, because we did consider this. I don't know that we're I mean, this is this way ahead, but you know, we might consider it for some areas, but not others. And if there are smaller towns that have tried this, given the way things are moving towards an app-based system, that would just be interesting information to have or context.
We can look into that.
All right. Anything else? Otherwise, I think we'll wrap this up and maybe I'll put it on our agenda for the night to discuss any more things that we want to have Addie put in the report. I think that's useful. I can put that on the agenda. Otherwise, thank you, Addie, for coming tonight. And we look forward to your report, and hopefully you can incorporate some of the comments you heard tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll definitely. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll definitely take all, all this back and I'll, I'll look forward to coming back before you all in February. When we are closer to having that final report done. And I'll be working with Betsy in the interim to get us there. So feel free to reach out to her or to me with any questions or comments that come up from here on out. So thanks again for your time and have a good evening, everyone.
Okay, I don't think we have time for curb cut regulations plus Mary isn't here. So I think I'm just going to chat over that. And then I think we've covered everything else on the agenda. So I would take a motion to adjourn unless somebody has anything they'd like to bring up. See you in January. Take a nice rest from this.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Is it seconded? We'll call Laura. Yes, Christina? See you next year.
Okay, thank you.